Everyone, sorry we are a little bit tardy this evening. We'd like to call this meeting to order. May I have a motion, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Teen, roll call, please.
Dr. Cordellino, here. Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Dr. Kane.
Here.
Dr. Modra.
Here.
Mr. Morella. Ms. Novy.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Thank you. Everyone, please rise for the pleasure of being here.
The United States of America is a republic which stands on nation, on God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Please read the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law Statement.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montpel Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the date, time, and location that was posted at the Montpel Township Municipal Building, all Montpel Township Public Schools, the Montpel Public Libraries, the Montpel Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper, on January tenth, two thousand seventeen.
So this evening, we will be starting off a little bit with a wonderful celebration of our students, but before we get to that, I'd like to call upon the high school representatives for their report.
So, starting with sports, the Montpel varsity football team wrapped up the season last Thursday with a fifty to six victory against Indy Hills. The crowd saw Mike Burke run twelve times for one hundred thirty-three yards and three touchdowns. Asol Grantshine scored on a thirty-three yard run. Anthony Mann on a fourteen yard run. Eric on a fifteen yard run. And Dean Ditch with a touchdown pass. On October thirtieth, Montpel's girls soccer team won one oh against Wayne Hills and offset against the sixth seed. Dani Vito added, assisted Danny Vito, to secure the victory. On Sunday of November fifth, the Montpel Mustangs' marching band finished their competitive season by placing fifth out of twenty-one bands in Allen Town, Pennsylvania, while getting a third-place finish in percussion. A big congratulations to the marching band. A recent update shows that Montpel's very own Nicole Villanilla is currently a statewide leader of block and equal volleyball team. She is fourteenth in the state with seventy-five blocks this season. On October twenty-sixth, Montpel's school hockey team won forty-two against North Hills. Rachel McHale, Brooke Ratcliffe, Allison Yu, and Morgan Paul each scored a goal, and Morgan, Molly Dorbin came in with two assists.
Moving on to some news about the clubs and Monica. Last night, the National Honor Society held its fall induction ceremony for angry appliance seniors, as well as new senior applicants. And THS was proud to welcome nine new students into the society and looks forward to how they uphold the pillars of scholarship, leadership, and character, and service. On November second, third, and fourth, MTHS' prom club treats the school to their annual fall play. This year's production was called Death by Chocolate, and it was a big hit. The play is a comedy slash murder mystery that features a rather unusual murder weapon, a bar of chocolate. Congratulations to the cast and crew for doing a great job bringing the production to life. This week marks the second and final week of the E-Club's annual Thanksgiving food drive. So far, the drive has garnered over six hundred food items, and hopefully we'll see even more come in as the drive wraps up. On top of the Thanksgiving charities, Montpel's School of Rock is hosting a charity concert next Tuesday, November twenty-first, calling it the Socks Giving Concert, in reference to their president mission, which is a pair of socks. The band is working in conjunction with the Homeless Bus, a local organization that helps to provide the New York City homeless to get warm socks that they need. The concert will take place in the high school auditorium. And finally, this Thursday, FBLA is hosting its annual badminton showdown. Twenty-four pairs have signed up to show off their badminton prowess. The event will be taking place after school in the old gym, and prizes will be given to the winners. There's going to be some fierce competition.
So moving on to what's happening in the school, or what happened in the school. Around Halloween, the school's music honor society, Triumph, helped organize an orchestral petting zoo for the district's elementary and middle school kids to enjoy. The event included a short concert featuring classic tunes from Hollywood movies to other well-known films, which was qualified an opportunity for the kids to also try out the different instruments used in the orchestra. Today was the last day of marking period one across the district. The school year is already quarter over. Wow, time flies. We want to share classmates the best of luck in their studying efforts for marking period two. Last week, the school district had off Thursday and Friday for teachers' conventions. The entire student body was grateful for the break, and judging from the tired looks of some of our teachers this morning, Monday morning, we're guessing they enjoyed it too. Fortunately, the district only has to wait a couple of weeks for our Thanksgiving break, something I'm sure all of us are looking forward to. November first marked the deadline for early admission college applications, a fact that has had many seniors stressed out. Now that this major deadline for college applicants has passed, Jack and I are hoping it will take a little bit of pressure off applying, probably though.
I'm finally just looking to what's coming up, the future of MTHS. The seniors are looking to spice up their lives as they have their senior banquet this Friday. It will take place at Il Tu Le Pano, a lovely banquet hall that the senior class is sure to enjoy. The event will take, span about four hours, beginning tonight at six-thirty and ending around ten. It's sure to be a night the seniors will not forget. Tomorrow, the drum club will be hosting Broadway Night, which is an event that features vocal, soloists, and groups performing tunes from their favorite Broadway productions. If you're a fan of Broadway, you can come stop by the high school auditorium tomorrow at seven-thirty and take a listen to the great music the singers of MTHS have been working hard to proclaim. And on the topic, we have a couple of other upcoming musical performances to look forward to. As mentioned earlier, next Tuesday, November twenty-first, is the School of Rock's Socks Giving Concert at seven PM, where they'll be playing some great music for a great cause. If rock isn't here to be, you can also catch the winter concert on Wednesday, December sixth. The winter concert will feature MTHS' concert band, choir, and orchestra in the renditions of winter seasonal music. Seems like there's a little bit of everything going on in MTHS' music department. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Excellent report. Any board member questions or comments?
Just the socks. You should emphasize the fish group. They have to be new, unused socks.
Yes, yes. Please bring new socks. I don't think they want, I don't want your dirty socks. Just a quick note on that, if you do not have any new socks, monetary donations are also accepted.
Were you saying that to Mr. Brown? Thank you very much. We'll move on now to Dr. Ropitar with the superintendent's report.
Okay, I just wanted to call attention to a couple of appointments that we have on the agenda this evening. I'm very pleased to recommend to folks who are both here this evening, Wayne Moreno, who is being recommended to be appointed to the position of supervisor of athletics, and David Galver, who is being recommended for the position of assistant principal here at Montpel Township High School. They are two outstanding candidates. We are, I'm very excited to recommend them, and I hope that the board will formalize their appointment tonight. That concludes our report. We've got plenty of other things going on.
Thank you, thank you. Can we move on to the?
Yes.
Presentation of the?
Presentation of the Shoprite Stars. We have Mr. Nanceak come up to introduce our honorities.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here tonight to present to our Shoprite Stars of the first marking period. These stars are nominated by faculty members in one of five different categories, and were selected by the administrative committee. In addition to the recognition of these wonderful students, Shoprite generously donates one thousand dollars towards Project Graduation for the class of twenty eighteen. Please join me in congratulating each of our stars this evening. In the field of academics, congratulations to Jessica Pleasure. Last school year, I recall a conversation I had with Jessica where I joked the prospect of accommodating her course request during the creation of master schedule. Specifically, in addition to twelfth grade PE and health, Jessica wanted to take seven EP classes, which is rare. Jessica began the year with a four-plus GPA and has taken eleven EP classes in her time at MTHS, including the seven that she received this year. Jessica is also a member of the National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, an AP scholar, and a National Merit Scholarship semi-finalist. In addition to her academic success, Jessica demonstrates her compassion and leadership skills through her youth group, VBYO, which is dedicated to community service, social action, education, creativity, recreation, and Jewish heritage. In VBYO, Jessica has held several leadership positions, run numerous community service events, and received three international awards, including one for consistent quality community service, philanthropy, and/or advocacy. At MTHS, Jessica has been co-president of the Gay Street Alliance for the last two years, and is a dedicated advocate for GSA in our school community. Although Jessica is still making decisions about whether to attend college, she currently plans on majoring in computer science. Again, congratulations.
The Board of Education has prepared a certificate of achievement for you. We'd also appreciate it if you could step on down and shake your hands with the board members, please. And fellows in here too.
Congratulations.
In the field of athletics, congratulations to Nicole Feaster. Prior to the start of the soccer season, Nicole told her ACL was unable to play. For some students, their season would have ended, but Nicole sitting on the sideline simply meant she was able to become a better leader, cheerleader, and teammate. Nicole looked at her injury as a learning experience which taught her about perseverance, why it's important to never take things for granted, and after being named team captain, how to be a better leader. In addition, Nicole learned what it means to be a student athlete and takes great pride in her athletic talent, coupled with her academic abilities. For example, Nicole has taken four EP classes in the last two years at MTHS, including two this year. Nicole has just committed to the University of Delaware, a Division One school where she will play lacrosse, and hopes to pursue in her senior degree. Again, congratulations.
A certificate of achievement for the Board of Education. Congratulations on already being into a great school. Best of luck, congratulations.
In the field of the arts, congratulations to Natalie Slavovski. Natalie has been involved with the learning arts department during each of her four years at MTHS. She's been a member of marching band for four years and is the current color guard captain. In addition, Natalie is identified as a gifted violinist in the orchestra and has performed regularly with the concert choir. Because of her love for music and extraordinary talent, Natalie is a member of the Triumph Music Honor Society. In classroom, Natalie is also an outstanding student. In her four years at MTHS, Natalie has taken six EP classes, including three this year, and is a member of National Honor Society. Natalie has applied to several great colleges and plans to major in biology, then at a medical school to become pediatrician. Again, congratulations. In the field of community service, congratulations to Adam Clydes. When Adam's nomination was submitted for this award, a five-page packet was attached. The document was written in Times New Roman, font size twelve, and single space, listing Adam's accomplishments, community service projects, leadership positions, and other experiences. It's a little huddling personally to know that a seventeen-year-old high school senior has a longer, more extensive, more impressive resume than mine. However, Adam is most proud of his eco-scout award, work as the key club's vice president of service, performances in community orchestra to raise money for various causes, and nomination as deacon of his church. Adam is also a member of the National Honor Society, French Honor Society, and an active member in the video game club. Adam has applied to several top colleges and plans to pursue a degree in computer science. Again, congratulations.
A certificate of achievement for you. Congratulations. Great achievements. We love you.
In the field of leadership, congratulations to Jack Bythewe. Each member of the administrative team has gotten to know Jack very well through his outstanding work as the co-president of MTTV. MTTV is a program that didn't even exist until last year, when Jack and another student proposed as a way of communicating directly with the student body. Since its inception, MTTV has become a staple at MTHS. Jack has also developed his leadership skills through his role as the president of the class of twenty eighteen. In his role, Jack took the responsibilities of being the voice of the entire class seriously, as demonstrated most recently when the time came to discuss possible changes to senior banquet. In addition, Jack is the president of film club, marching band percussion captain, a member of the National Honor Society Jazz Band, and for the past twelve years, has volunteered at St. Baldrick's Charity to help students diagnose, help children diagnose with cancer. Jack is still currently undecided about life after MTHS, but the entire high school community knows that whatever he chooses to do, Jack will be successful and demonstrate the leadership characteristics that God has to areas today. Again, congratulations to Jack and to all of our first marking period Shoprite Stars.
A certificate of achievements. Congratulations. If anyone has not seen the MTTV, it's online. If you can catch them online, it's really brilliant. Congratulations on that and everything.
If our Shoprite, you said, please. Go up. I'm trying. What is this?
All right, why don't you get up here? Oh. So, congratulations to all the students. I just wanted to make note that, sitting where we sit, one of the best things about sitting here when a presentation like this is ongoing, is having the opportunity to look at the parents' faces and to see the pride that they have in their children. To you, the parents, congratulations, and the loved ones, congratulations on your children's achievements. Thank you. Moving forward.
I would like to introduce Robert Hay, who is from our auditing firm, Mercy and Higgins, who will be presenting the annual comprehensive financial report and the findings from the box.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As Christine said, we have just recently filed your statutory annual audit for the 2016-17 fiscal year. We issued two reports which are required to be filed with the state. One is your comprehensive annual financial report, and one is your audit management report. Financial report contains all of your required financial statements and related no disclosures, and the management report discusses the results of the audit with any findings or recommendations. We agreed both reports with the finance committee in a little more detail, so I'll be a little brief tonight, not for everybody, but a bunch of numbers only. In the cap for the comprehensive annual financial report, the district received three opinions on their financial statements. One is on the financial statements themselves, one is on your internal controls, and one is on your state and federal grant programs. In all three instances, the district received a unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of opinion the auditor can give, the highest level of assurance. Basically, you start out at unmodified, and if nothing precludes us from issuing the unmodified, it's make you a lower opinion to get that unmodified. So all three opinions were unmodified, which is very positive, a result from the audit. Financial statement wise, the district, end of the year, we're about two point six million in surplus, which is for your unassigned fund balance, basically money that's available for future use. Top that's up, about ninety-three thousand from last year, so you have a positive year as far as fund balance. In addition to that, which is your surplus, you have money set aside in reserves for future purposes, about two point four million for capital purposes, and about fifty-one thousand for maintenance, which is required maintenance of your school facilities. So you have those three kind of buckets of funds that are available for the district. As far as the management report, there were three findings which have recommendations which require corrective action, which I believe your corrective action plan is probably on the agenda tonight to be approved. So those three findings will have those corrective action which are required to implement this year. The three findings, they're what we call general findings, or general comments. There's three types of findings and recommendations you can have in an audit. One is a general comment, which these three are. You have significant deficiency, which is a little more severe than that, and then you have a major weakness, which are really severe findings. So in all three of yours, they're what we call general comments, where houseclean type things that are pretty easily correctable, and with that corrective action plan in front of you tonight, hopefully we don't see those again next year. But I think on a financial point, and the findings and recommendations are very positive audit, a couple of years, few years in a row, and you have some positive audits, so I think the district's in a good financial state moving forward. And as far as the findings and recommendations, there's nothing really material or significant to report, just some things that need some thinking.
So if we have to take any questions, if anybody has any questions on either report. Any board member have any questions? Very well. Okay, thank you, thank you. Good night. Just would want to say, with Mr. Tevis having retired, that a good portion of this was his, and he's had a number of very solid ones in a row. We look forward with you, Christine, as our steward, going forward. Continuing. No question. In this way. Thank you. All right, thank you. Any reports? Any committee reports? Mr. Brown?
The finance committee met on November first. One of the first items we met was with our auditor, Rob, and he gave the report, and there's three corrective action items on the agenda, which is a result of that report. Also, the administration updated us on the scheduling for the referendum projects that were approved in September, and they'll be sent out to the board shortly, prioritizing which bathrooms get done, which schools have roofs, and so on and so forth. And they had it in a nice project format, and hopefully that'll be coming out shortly. Also, we reviewed various options for financing, the referendum amount of seventeen million dollars. We currently have our financial planner reviewing various options, whether to sell the bonds now, go through the Morris County Co-op, which has a triple-A rating, or we have a double-A rating. And the other thing that we sort of posh was to go on temporary finance, because we didn't want to take a twenty-year project into twenty-one years of funding. The, we did have a change order that was approved this on the agenda for closing out the Hillville project. We do have several meetings scheduled in the next several weeks before the holidays. The present administration, Mrs. Slump mainly, has been reviewing the current budget, reviewing where we are now that we're fully staffed, and she's going through each account, analyzing where we have shortfalls and where we have potential surplus. And we'll have more information once she completes that project, hopefully before Christmas, so that way we can find out where we are this year to really, really nail it down, and then that'll help with the projection for next year. Comprehensive minutes of the meeting will be disseminated to you like this Friday, Christine, or whenever the next packet goes out. If you have any questions, let us know.
Any other committee reports?
Sure. Curriculum. I just met tonight, actually, discussed a few things. Discussed use of Chromebooks in special education. Discussed the math classes, specifically algebra at Losar in the high school, number of kids in eighth and ninth grade taking algebra, and possibly seeing what we could do to get to the number of kids taking algebra. Talked about the class sizes at Losar and the high school, and possibly some of the classes that were below enrollment, seeing what we could do about trying to get those numbers up. Discuss the fact that there aren't going to be many curriculum revisions this year. Discuss the gifted and talented program that's very good differentiation, there's no pullouts. Scheme committee has gone full steam, looking for the scheme day twenty eighteen. Discuss the state science assessments that are moving to eleventh grade eliminated biology. Discuss the upcoming Mass Olympia that's parents want, and it's becoming a fourth and fifth grade after-school program. And finally, discuss the middle school worldwide discussion.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike, what did you say, biology?
Well, the standard is test in biology.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
I have communications. The communications committee met on November first, and the front goal was to review the successful referendum and the steps that the district took in order to get the word out to make the referendum as successful as it was in terms of its passage. So, Dr. Ropitar and Sue Marinello deserve a lot of credit for getting out there and really explaining the referendum very well, and very, very easy to understand way, really hitting the highlights. Put together a fairly extensive packet of what was done during that time period, and it was for the purposes of our review, but also for the sake of memorializing those steps that were taken for us and for future boards, just so that they understand what helped to make this referendum successful. We also talked about brand, the branding update. I think at the last meeting we did here from the sky, branding is in its final stages. The elementary schools were going to be voting on the poses for their mascots, and I know they're very excited about that, as well as the high schools in the process of finalizing the mascot logo and the academic shield. We spent some time talking about the website. The website has been of concern to all of us, really, not just the board, but students, parents, and the community at large. It's a huge, huge undertaking, and I guess it's easy to put aside because it is such a large project to try and wrap your arms around. But thanks to Dr. Ropitar and to, this year I believe Dr. Ropitar is planning on putting together sort of a task force, a website task force, just to hear what some of the issues are, and perhaps, well, to definitely use that in the future to help improve the website. website. So, thank Dr. Ropitar and as well as Sue. And the last item we discussed was a live feed. Sue and Michael, Sue Marinello and Michael Johnson, our board member, visited Maris College, which is Michael's alma mater, to see some of the structure that they use for their live feed, and while we can't duplicate a college-level live feed, we did identify some improvements to help make live streaming a little more friendly and better, or well better, in our school district. That's the conclusion of my report for Communications Committee.
Thank you, Eric. Any ad hoc reports, delegate liaisons?
I'd like to also report that on Veterans Day Saturday, we were very well represented at the youth center where the ceremonies were held inside, a little chilly down on it, and I know Michael Ryan was there, and Karen was there, Mike Palmer, and myself, and Mike Palmer's dad was there, who was a Marine, and it was quite a moving ceremony, and I'd like to personally thank Mike and his dad for the service that they've given, and thank him to tell your dad when you see him that I'm really a nice guy. But again, I think Mike and his dad deserve a lot of congratulations for being in the service. Thank you.
Yeah, I echo that. Mike's dad is a terrific fellow, and if you ever have the opportunity to talk to him, you should, because he knows a lot, he's got a great sense of humor, and he was a Marine during World War II, and we thanked him for his service. But what I was really proud of was to watch one of our own board members stand when they asked for those who served in the Army. They went through all the services, and when they asked for the Army folks to stand, our own Mike Palmer stood as a member of the Army, and I believe, Mike, you went on to serve in the Judge Advocate Board in the Army. So, thank you, and thank you, Dad, and we're proud to serve with you on our Board of Education.
Could I just follow up on that, about the ceremony? I'd also like to mention that one of our, the two main speakers were Mayor, Mr. Sandin, which made a great speech, and incredibly moving speech by one of our principals. And if you ever get a chance to hear him tell the story of his family and how he's here because of the rescue of his family by American troops in World War II as they were on their way to likely death camp in the Utes. I think everybody can add a meaning, and just with the artifacts that brought it home from the family that they used, the story is just an incredible story of survival and of heroism and of the importance of our veterans and the things you have to hear to be there about that rescue. So, I was incredibly moved, and I kept repeating that story all weekend to people that I could tell them to. Okay, that's how impressed I was with it. It was terrific.
Yes, that's right.
Any other delegate liaisons? PTC?
I have Morris County real quick. There was a meeting on October 19th. Had a couple of guests attend. County Superintendent Roger Jakes was there, spoke briefly to the New KU Sac regulations and their alignment with Chief New Jersey. President of New Jersey School Boards was there, Dan Sinclair just talked about some of New Jersey School Boards initiatives. Our Field Services Rep, Charlene Peterson, also updated the audience to new certification requirements for boards and individuals. She also mentioned that there will be a new superintendent's evaluation tool that was unveiled at workshop. It will be available for this year's superintendent's evaluation, where we have a choice of the old versus the new, and then the following year it will be the only option available. The keynote presentation was a panel discussion on charter schools and student choice. We welcomed Dr. Victor Valeski from East Brunswick, Mike Fransick, New Jersey School Boards Director of Governance Relations, and Robert Gelli, President of the Board of Unity Charter School. Ray Penny moderated the discussion. Mike Fransick provided a summary of the legislative history of charter schools. Dr. Valeski spoke to some of the challenges that charter schools posed to traditional public schools, as well as the growing issue of the expansion of existing charters. Robert Gelli provided insights into the mission of charter schools and academic accountability. It was really a very informative and enlightening discussion, very productive, and certainly will continue those kinds of dialogues in the future. And in the good news and sharing portion of the meeting, the Quanix School District, under the leadership of Dr. Brett Charleston showcased their use of Twitter and the positive impact it's had on the schools and in the community, and I mentioned this to Dr. Ropitar and to Sue Marinello, and not to my surprise, and only because of my own deliteracy and the use of Twitter, did I learn that we also have a very active Twitter account, thanks to Sue and Renee, so kudos to us and kudos to Quan.
Thanks, Karen. Any other delegate liaisons?
Just want to remind everyone in regard to the Mustangs, that the vibe their program is on, they go on the Mustang site. I certainly intend, I think anyone who's picked up on the Board of Education might be interested in having their work out there by whatever he's called now. He was called Monte at one time, the Mustang, I don't know what we're going to call him from here on. Okay, but it might be a good idea, Mike, if you work out there. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that PTC, the parents' PTC evening meetings, there's only a few this year. It just so happens that this week, this Thursday evening, is the evening, one of the evening PTCs, and I have a convergence of three different meetings. If anybody would like to be the stand-in for that meeting, I'd really appreciate it. If it's possible, let me know. All right, this is Thursday. Later on, I'd be right back.
Matt, also, I was at DAC last Wednesday night. As concerns of schools, like DAC is always will be hosting the project, graduation project promotion, working toward putting that together, and also toying with the idea of trying to resurrect the dances at Lazar, haven't done it in a few years, maybe something to try it for a community event, get the kids together, just something that's possibly on ours, maybe I'll have a meeting over, and we're going to try it.
Any PTC?
Yeah, Matt, Karen reminded me that on December 7th is next Morris County School Boards, so Jane, if you could register for me for that, please. I think it's at Bruton High School this time?
Yes.
I believe.
Yeah, it's an interesting topic, too. It's an interesting topic. The topic is going to be on the various programs that high schools offer for high school students, for example, International Baptist Glory, dual enrollment, AP, versus, old verse, 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 versus just the traditional path. And what, you know, we're hoping to glean out of that is how students make those choices. So, should be a good meeting.
You know, just to add, almost every one of them that I've been to was fascinating. The one on charter schools, I mean, there's so much that I learned about it. It's almost, I'm really looking for each one to the next one, see if they, because they keep getting better. No, I mean, there are things we really need to know about. So, and of course, the DA is, I mean, delegates, and I'm just looking forward to, you know, what's going to go on here.
Thank you. Any PTC liaisons?
I do have one. I did attend Cedar Hill on October 18th. Dr. Raj gave the 2017 park results, and I thanked the Cedar Hill home school for their enthusiastic embrace of the referendum. And they do a wonderful Veterans Day assembly, which I was able to attend with some of our administration, a very moving program, other items that are on the calendar.
PTC, anyone else? Any additional reports? All right, we've come to the first public participation on our agenda for items on the agenda. Anyone seeing as there is none, would like to entertain a motion? First, second, to review items. I am, I, anyone from the Board of Commons, questions? Any administrative? I just wanted to thank all the PTCs and others for their donations and kindness and charitable behavior towards the children of the school district for item J1. Anything else for item J or K? So, is, any comments or questions? Item L?
Matt, just a congratulations to our new vice principal at the high school and to Mr. Guarino for his promotion to supervisor and athletic director. We're excited to have both of you.
I think, just looking back, look at his, look at the muscle he has. Suits, I've never, you've got to get a picture of his gang back there. We got the team.
You're right.
Thank you. Anything else for item L, item M? Item N, policy? Item O? No call, please.
Mr. Graff?
Abstain on M11. Yes on everything else?
Snowy?
Yes.
Dr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Abstain on J, on four, yes, twos.
Dr. Modra?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
I, unless I mentioned, I mentioned it. If it's not the A or something.
See, if there's anything we need to abstain of, if it's hard to count.
I think there might be, like, I have.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Khan?
Abstain on I, yes, to everything else. So, we are official?
Yes.
I would like at this moment to congratulate Mr. Gelber, our new assistant principal in the high school, and also Mr. Guarino, our new athletic supervisor.
Just an FYI, in case it's never too late, all the main production on this Friday. Okay, it's Friday.
Friday night.
Friday, Friday. Friday, is it? Did I, this, this Friday?
During my check.
I can't make that permission. Yes, I know that you're going to be there.
Any other items of old business? General Board of Commons. Seeing as there is none, public participation? Anyone from the public want to step forward, say anything? Seeing as there is none, have a motion.
So?